All right, it is 5:45 and I called it the public hearing to order. As I call your name, please say aye, Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
Jaime?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Dr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Coach Cuero?
Here.
And myself, Mr. Nieto. Item three, a public hearing of proposed 2020, 2021 budget and tax rate, Dr. Canales.
Unfortunately, Mr. Andres Sanchez will be presenting on the proposed budget and tax rate for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Full year, it's been a lot of work given where we are with the pandemic. And Mr. Sanchez will display a presentation and then we will begin.
Do you see the presentation?
Yes, Andres.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Okay. Okay, on slide two, I have information on the ADA. I had discussed it before. So the ADA that we budgeted and the actual ADA we achieved for the last five years plus the proposal for next year. For the 1819, we budgeted 15,905. We achieved 15,820, including the flexible ADA from the SASI program. We were short 85. For the year that ended, 1920, we budgeted 15,751. We achieved 15,891, including the SASI ADA. You know, that one, we surpassed the budget by 140. For the following year though, 2021, we're only budgeting 15,200 ADA. We're being conservative because we don't do not know how the school year develop. We're hoping we can increase this ADA, but we budgeted only 15,200. Uh, or ADA. Want to move to the next slide. Now, in that local county appraisal district, really the 2020 certified property values. And for the 2021 year, our values are $2,615,319,836. That exceeds the prior year values by almost 200,000, a little bit more than 200, a little bit more than 200 million dollars in property values. That's an 8.3% increase over the prior year. Uh, the budget that we have in the, on the books, next year, the gifted and talented budget, the high school allotment budgets, are allocated at 90% of the prior year's budget. This is a budget funded by the local maintenance fund. The state funds, PTE, which is vocational education, virtual education, bilingual education, early education, and dyslexia were calculated at 94% of the prior year's budget allocation. The state capacity education fund is also calculated at 94% of the geographical counts provided by TA for the 1920 year. Any questions? Mr. Sanchez? Yes, sir. How, like, the increase of 200 million, how will that benefit us this year? Well, uh, we'll get, uh, we're gonna get a little bit more revenue. Okay. It is not a lot, uh, because one thing it did, Mr. Nieto, the values by being higher like that, our tax rate had to drop about five pennies. Right. Almost 105 to almost $1. Correct. The legislature had approved that for the 2021 year, the school district could not levy taxes on more than a 2.5% increase on the property values. Right. 3.3, there wasn't formulas in place by the legislature that reduced the rate from almost $1.05 to almost $1. And that's in the next couple of slides explained that. So it reduces our value, but uh, it's a little bit higher otherwise, but it's hard to kind of tell. Because we're using the same rate. If we were using the same rate that last year, it would have been a big increase in revenues. But we don't want to do that to taxpayers either. Neither do the states, so we adjusted the tax rate to make sure that all the school districts follow that. Okay, uh, thank you, continue. Yes. Uh, the proposed budget 2021 is short in revenues compared to the 2019, 2020 budget due to the uncertainty faced by West Acquahy under the current circumstances, you know, like all the school districts due to the coronavirus pandemic. And ADA revenue are budgeted at 551 less ADA than last year. We generate about $7100 for each ADA. Some of the 551 shorter amount of ADA than last year, we had about 3.9 million dollars less ADA budgeted. So actually, we have more money on ADA. On appropriate tax revenues, we budgeted 91% for collection. Last year, we budgeted 92%, and we hope we can collect all 91%. We, we do not know how the collection will come up throughout the year due to the economic conditions and effects it has on the community.
Andres, can you show that slide? Can you show this slide?
Uh, I'm sorry. Hmm, uh, let me see. Do you see it?
Yes, now, yes.
Does it show now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. When I moved, uh, it minimized it, I apologize. Okay, so, uh, ADA is 3.9 million less and the property tax revenues, like I said, the current levy for the 2020 year, which is for the 2021 fiscal year, we budgeted at 91%. Last year, we budgeted at 92%. We budgeted 1% less. And I mentioned earlier that we hope to collect all 91% of those tax revenues, but that will help us to make the budget the way we have it set up right now. We collect less, we won't be able to have, we will have to cut on expenditures. They did on so that we can balance the budget at the end and not have a deficit. The prior year tax revenues are budgeted at 10%. The prior year, we budgeted 20%, so we have to cut 10% on that. Athletic events, we budgeted at 15% only. We hope we can have some athletic events. We might not be able to. Interest income is budgeted at current rate, which is about 25% interest. At the last time, uh, I forgot who asked me about the scoreboard advertisement. We budgeted a reduced, largely reduced amount of advertising. We didn't budget the full amount we expected to collect if it was a normal year. I'm gonna fly, go to the next slide. This is the one with the tax rates. The 2021, 2020, 2021 MNO compressed tax rate as confirmed by TA is .9989 cents, almost $1 for every $100 of taxable property valuation. It is almost five cents less than the year for the 1920 year. We had discussed perhaps an increase on the INS tax rate and with consultation with the board, we decided to leave it at the same two pennies as last year, which helped us to generate about a million, million to the, million 200,000 in taxes that it used to pay the bonds. We pay almost $4 million for the bonds and we had to cut the money from the local maintenance plan to the INS to make the bond payments. The paper showed the tax rates that we had for the 2018, 2019 year. The MNO rate was $1 and almost 14 cents. INS was two pennies. The total was $1 and almost 16 cents. For the current year, 1920, we are 1, 105. We took pennies for INS, almost $1.07. For next year, we are $1, you know, 2 cents for INS in a dollar and 2 cents for the total. As I mentioned before, the, the tax rate got reviewed by TA because our property values went up a lot. Any comments or questions on that one?
So the citizens, the citizens will pay, will pay less taxes?
No, actually, they're gonna pay a little bit more. Yeah, it would have been worse. And the tax, noted that we put on the paper, indicate that taxpayer pay will pay a little bit more. And it's one of the agenda items that we have for today. On a, on a average home at $100,000, an average home this year is $100,951. And a person with a home like that would pay approximately $84 more, even with the rate as it is. Because the value is going up for everybody. So, so even though the, the total is 101, but the price value of homes went up, uh, the tax rate is still a little higher than the last year. Yeah, the taxable amount they pay is gonna be, yes, sir. And this is the tax rate for the district. Correct. Whatever the city does, the county, subject to college, the other entities will affect that rate as well, the amount that taxpayers pay. This is the tax, the taxes for West Acquahy. Correct. So if, if the, if the appraisal level hadn't gone to increase and, and this would have decreased, then the homeowners would have paid less. Correct, yes, sir. Okay.
And that $84, that's for the year, right?
Yes, sir, that's for the year, correct.
To make it very clear to anybody who's listening in, so it's gonna be around six, seven dollars a, a month.
Seven dollars a month, average, yes. Okay, I'll move on to the next page. Uh, top is health insurance. Like I mentioned before, reviewing claims, we're gonna tell the La Rosa, with the narrative, we anticipate that we'll have at least break even. Hopefully, we will have a surplus. We don't know the amount of the supply yet to the end of the year. Therefore, we are not recommending an increase in the contributions to the medical plan by either the district or the employees. The, the health rate will remain the same for the next year. The bottom section is something new that we learned of on Friday. We received our bill, TASB, Texas Association of School Boards. They work with us with an unemployment compensation insurance and they handle our claims. And we submit a contribution to them based on the claim they calculate. Our bill for the quarter end of June 30, 2020 came out to one, almost $172,000. The same quarter the year before, June 30, 2019, was about $16,700. There's a big increase on the amount. And this has to do with our claims file for unemployment on the school district. You know, TASB, and this is going on for everybody. So they just let us know to be on the lookout for this, that, uh, there's a, there's a curse act credit that has been approved to reimburse school visits, for example, for 50% of that increase. That they haven't provided all the details. So they did give us a, an extension to pay this amount until December. So we, instead of paying the 171, we can only pay 85,000 for it. They haven't given us the details, but we still have to recognize it in the 20, in the 1920 budget. But, uh, that's what it came out to. Taking this into consideration, we make allowance for it in the final amended budget that we gave you information on. And also in the budget for next year, we had to make some consideration there. We had to keep a close eye on those numbers for those, those expenditures will increase as well. Any comments or questions?
Andres, back, back on the taxes, just for the citizens. The district did not increase taxes. The reason everyone's paying more is because the appraisal district increased the values.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the district did not increase taxes.
That is correct.
The tax rate was actually lower, but the increase is due to the appraisal district increasing the values.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I do want to make sure that our citizens were clear on that.
Thank you. I'll move on to the page seven. Uh, the current proposed budget is balanced by making some adjustments. We had mentioned that we had 28 T2 vacancies, which is that retire or resign at the end of the 2019, 2020 school year. The total, almost 1.8 million dollars. Two vacancies are being filled in from within. Uh, we did some cuts on the substitute teacher budget. And also, I had mentioned the property taxes, we had raised it from 85% to 91%. We include the collection budgeted, we can help balance the budget. We did not cut anything else, those are the only cuts we made. And I mentioned before also that the budget for next year, that not include a budget for COVID-19 expenditure, things that might be needed, additional personal protective equipment or disinfectant items like that, they are not included here. Whatever we need to buy for that, we have to have a funding from the fund balance and having approval from the board to take it from there. Andres? Yes, sir.
He has the question, on an earlier screen, uh, earlier slides, you showed that you had got, uh, was, what, one of the budgets to 15% of last year's. Is that the athletics or what was that?
Yes, sir, the athletic revenue, not the expenditure, the revenues. We have an amount for football revenue, stadium entrance. The admittance to the stadium is the one that is a big amount of athletics. If we, we were not sure how many games we would have, we only budgeted 15% of the revenues for athletics programs.
But 15, to 15%, man, that's gonna be tough, so, okay.
Okay. Okay. On compensation, the current budget figures do not reflect any pay raises for staff members. We can mention that last year when we approved the budget, the big pay raises that the board approved, that we probably wouldn't have money for pay raises due to the funding remaining the same. And unless something increased, some collections of taxes or ADA, we wouldn't have the money. So, but we are offering administration recommending approval of two one-time, uh, what do we call it, Ms. Segura, what were the words that we discussed?
Yeah, to say one-time payment incentive.
Incentive, incentive payment, one-time incentive payment. I did not change the word stipend. Do all district staff leave a pay raise for the 2021 fiscal year? On, on the, there's an amount suggested for, recommended for December 2020 as a amount to be paid to everybody. And an amount to be contingent on generating additional ADA by the district as a whole to provide the revenues to pay those, in those, uh, those amounts at the end of the year. And I'll go to the next slides, that's what the information is. This one's on page nine, so the amount that we had calculated from, included in the budget of $820,000 for these amounts to be paid to staff. The teachers receiving $400. Uh, registered nurses, counselors, librarians, trainers, instructional coaches, $325 for professional staff, manual trades, $250, and administrators, $350. That would total 820. And this amount, uh, the overall amount is in the budget. And we would, uh, recommend that to be paid in December. The remaining amounts, I will move to the next slide.
Andres, let me ask you on this one. At the last, at the last meeting, you know, this slide was shown to us. And I think, I think I may have mentioned that if the ADA increased, that if you had additional monies coming in from your fund balance or other, other monies available, that the board in December could go ahead and increase this amount to a larger amount. That's what I had discussed last time. So is this, is this correct? Will the board have that option in December to go ahead and increase the amount that you show right now?
Well, uh, initially, I had, we were thinking we had a, an amount that we could use. Probably about only 200,000 available, but because of the unemployment claims, that amount is no longer available for, to add it to the stipend. Any increase will have to come from fund balance, Dr. Rivera.
Okay.
This happened on Friday, so that changed everything.
No, I understand that, but the board, because tonight, we're not gonna approve, we're not gonna approve this amount. It'll be paid in December, but this amount could be higher again, based on different things. Your ADA might increase. You might have additional savings and things, money you don't spend. So when, when the board approves the budget tonight, are they, are we approving the amount you have here? Or is it possible that by December, the amount can change to a higher amount? That's the question that I have to you.
Yes, uh, this amount, we have it in the budget. Yeah, the, when the board wants to approve a higher amount, uh, they can approve it now. It would have to be approved now. Otherwise, approve it now, they say you run 700 or 1,000, whatever the amount is that the board wants to approve. Or it makes changes to this when we get to the agenda at the meeting. Then, uh, we could say, approve that instead of paying this, pay a higher amount subject to getting the money from the budget and from fund balance. But you approve it now, because if we approve it till next year, we will have to have a public hearing. And the board can do it, but then when you do a public hearing like that, you believe it would have to be subject to having a half a day meeting or something that we had to do something for it during the amount.
No, I understand. Mine, mine is a very simple thing, that in December, the board can decide, you already have the amount that you have here, but the board can decide in December, if there's additional monies, and I really believe you're going to have additional monies. Uh, this amount can increase in December, that's, that's the question that I have.
Yes, uh, yeah, that, I understand, Dr. Rivera.
I'm sorry.
And I said, I understand what you're saying. And I'd like to say yes, but I can't, because we don't know by December whether we'll have the money, because if in January, February, the biggest tax collections can start coming in September, but we don't know till January. Prior to that, we don't know with any money.
All I'm saying, it should be a closed issue, because in, in December, maybe, maybe, maybe you can give more, but if you can't, this is the amount that you can afford. But I'm just saying, I want to leave the door open for the board to decide in December, if they want to increase this to a higher amount.
Uh, Andres, that's a good point from Dr. Rivera. I, you know, we don't know yet until we get the full ADA, and of course, how many students are gonna be coming to school. But that's a good point that Dr. Rivera has, that if by then, if by November, you kind of have an idea of how much additional money we'll have, like Dr. Rivera mentioned, and then we can make, uh, we can approve it, but with a motion to be able to amend it if we have the money available at that time.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, just, just to add, Mrs. Segura looked some of the research up with TASB and one of the documents from TASB, it does say that, um, they give the public funds, this is to comply with state law, districts seeking to grant a one-time payment incentive to employees. This is what this is. We need to approve the prospective increase or the possibility of granting an increase as part of the board's budget and compensation approval process. So I think that's what y'all are talking about right now.
Yes, bottom line is the board can decide in November. If you say, look, we've got additional money, the board can, the board can raise the amount that are here. Now, kind of skipping around, now, you had talked last time about having a bonus, an incentive bonus if the ADA goes up also in, in May, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir, I said, if the ADA, we achieve the ADA, we can pay an extra amount in, in June. By the end of the year, we'll know. And, and I put a sliding scale, so if we get at least 200 ADA, we can repeat this amount that's here. We get another, another 200, another 50 ADA, we can increase the 400 for the teachers to 600. Another 50, like that, that's what I had.
Let me ask you this, in past years, in past years, because I'm told that in past years, there was no, in, in June, that even though the ADA was higher, that there were no checks issued to staff? Were, were checks issued to staff in June if the ADA went up the last two years? That's my question.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back on my slide here, Dr. Rivera. On, see that, 1819 year? For the 1819, we provided a $750 pay raise to everybody. And we said, if we get additional ADA, we can provide more money. We budgeted 15,905, we only achieved 15,820. So we did not get the budgeted ADA. That is why I know money was paid. The schools, we had budgeted a three-tier amount. An amount, if we get the ADA, anybody gets another $250. And there was some information. With that, the schools.
If the schools had a higher ADA, because you had a formula.
Yeah, I know.
Even though as a district, you didn't reach the ADA, were those, were those schools that achieved the ADA, were they given additional funds in June?
No, sir. No, 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 they weren't. And, oh, sorry, because the, the approval was, if we get the additional ADA, we can pay any of the other stipends, otherwise we can't, because there's no money to pay it. And I thought I was very clear on it, on, on the explanation, that if we get ADA, we pay more money, because we have extra ADA, we can pay more money to the school. See, the schools are the ones that generate the ADA, and at least seven schools did. They showed me the ADA, the additional enrollment, they did their part. And we felt bad, because I said, I know they didn't get part unfortunately, but then I get the ADA. Without the ADA, what I had to have, go on to fund balance to get the money.
Right. What I'm saying is kind of, a little bit unfair. If a, if a school, any school, if you're told, if you get 97%, 98%, you're gonna get additional fund, and they reached that amount, but no money was given to them. It's kind of a little bit unfair.
Yeah, it is, yes, because they put in a lot of effort into that. You're correct.
And I think you can get the money from fund balance or some other amount, but you can't make a promise and then not keep it in June. Anyway, these are just food for thought.
And again, Dr. Rivera, there, if we approve a proposal like that, I think originally, when, that year, we approved a district-wide goal, but I think here, we've approved a district-wide goal with the exception that if that particular school does get it, then we'll have to put it in the, in the motion to be able to approve that, what you're saying.
Right, all I'm saying is, you made a promise, let's keep the promise. Very simple.
Dr. Rivera, I agree with you completely, and, and I feel, Andres, and the rest of the board, I feel that, if, if you do not pay the schools or give the, the additional income to the schools that are doing their part to increase the ADA, because the other schools did not do their part or, or just it didn't work out, then the schools that are, are working to get us the ADA will not, there's, there's nothing to, that, to drive them.
No incentive.
They're, 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 they're depending on everybody else. You know, so I believe, if, if we're gonna write something up, it has to be that the schools that, uh, that do meet the, the increase need to get, uh, the incentive. That way, the rest of the schools will try to follow suit when they don't get their incentive, because they didn't meet it on that part. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit, since we're on the stipends, I don't agree with the amounts at all.
Okay.
Andres, when we ran into, went into, ran into trouble with the buses, that all our buses, you found the money immediately to, to buy the new buses. I mean, there was no, let's go, let's do it. You know, right now, we're all in this, in this boat, that's not very, very good, you know, we're, we're up. Every single person in this, not, not even in the city, in the country, is having problems. You know, and, and I feel that $400 is not enough, and then the, the, the scale that you have, I know that it's not a, it's not a raise. It's not a, because there is no money for raises. There is no money for raises. Yet, we have, we have been putting money away in the fund balance for a rainy day. This is our rainy day. You know, uh, I feel that, that it should be $1,000, and I know I'm gonna upset some people, and then the rest of the board, we can work on this. Uh, I, I feel that $1,000 across the board for each employee is justifiable. We're all the same, we're, we've all lost, we've all, we've all had more expenses. Everybody has more, has had more expenses during this, during this time. And, uh, and I feel that, that we need to protect and then help all our, all our employees, because a lot of employees, without students, we're, we have nothing. So that, that is my thought on, on where we need to be with the, with the, with this stipend.
Coach Cuero, what do you think about that?
Well, I, I agree with everything that Dr. Rivera and Mr. Lopez, Mr. Lopez is saying. I don't know what the total amount's gonna be, but, but when, when we do come up with something, let's come up with something that's equal for every employee. Because every time, every time I go to the shore, nothing changes for, for individuals based on their, on their background. It's all gonna be the same, and the cost of living is just getting out, out of hand. Uh, so, you know, whatever we do for our employees, let's do it all across the board equally for everyone. That's, that's what I'd like to share with you.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, any comments on that?
I'd like to see a significant increase in the stipend. The way I view, view it, like,
The way I view it, like Coach Quer said, there is a higher cost of living. But the way I also look at it is, it's kind of like a stipend to help supplement cost of internet, cost of computer repair or upgrade, things like that, since we're requiring these things of our employees that are, this year, that's kind of extra. Kind of like extra school resources, and by extra, I mean outside school. So I'd like to see a stipend increase, I'd like to see what we can do about finding the money to do that, I think that's a priority for us. But I also like to say that, even if we have to dip into the fund balance, I don't think it should become a slush fund. It should be something that, like Mr. Lopez said, it's a rainy day, and that's what it's used for.
Dr. Jaime?
Well, you know, Mr. Sanchez, I guess my question, and I'm kind of in line with Dr. Rivera, you know, when December comes around, whatever we approve tonight, when December comes around, we're going to have, or we're going to know a figure as to what our surplus was after insurance claims runoff. You know, we'll have a better idea as to what the surplus was, and I know we're probably jumping ahead here, but what, do you have a figure already on the surplus for this past year?
We figured it might be between three point five to four million for the nineteen twenty year.
And that's just going into the fund balance?
No, that will go to fund balance.
So I mean, I think that's, you know, that surplus. You know, I think we can definitely, you know, if we don't approve it tonight, at least, you know, for sure, once we know, come closer to December, if we're, you know, three million surplus from nineteen, from our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year, I mean, I think that's where we can, as a board, make that adjustment to whatever stipend we're going to be paying out. Just my two cents on that, you know, that's.
And that's what I'm saying, it can be a thousand or more, it just depends on what monies are available come November, come December, you'll have a better idea. Again, in your budget, you're not going to spend every category, because there's less travel, there's less extracurricular activities. So all I'm saying is is that in December, November, December, the amount can be a thousand or more, or if you don't have the monies, it can be exactly the way you have it. But give it a chance for the board to approve this in December.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez, any comments, Mr. Gonzalez, Andrew?
Yes, Coach. Again, I think seven that sit up here all agree that the four hundred dollars really isn't enough. I'm along the same lines, for us to have at least the opportunity to make that change in November, if the funds are there. You know, everybody's going through a hard time, everybody, and you know, this is our time to back them up, and I think that's where Dr. Rivera and the rest of the board is is saying the same thing, for the lack of better words. I just, you know, four hundred is four hundred, and it's a lot for a lot of people, but, you know, I really truly believe that that we can get up to, whether it's the thousand or seven fifty or twelve fifty, it's just, we have to do something differently than that four hundred dollars.
Okay. Good comments from all the board members. You want any other further questions, or Mr. Sanchez, continue?
No, go ahead, continue. Continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Okay. Okay. You see that page ten, that has the multiple amounts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm back on the presentation. So this is the amount that I had listed as to be paid in June, if we had the money. Now, let me say this, if we have the funds, like you mentioned, Dr. Rivera, in December, that we could pay this amount, six hundred or eight hundred, to increase the other one that I have, would you, would that be it for the year? Or you still leave it subject to additional money, they say ADA at the end of the year?
I think it can be both at the end of the year too.
It is subject to additional funds if available.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I guess we need to mention that when it comes to the approval of the budget later on, to mention that the stipend, the contingent stipend to continue the way it is, and they want to be paid in December.
Right.
To mention that if we have additional funds to increase the amount at that time, but the board to increase the amount.
And just.
I'll be at your service, and come back and look at the figures and come up with something.
So I had a question. So a moment ago, Dr. Rodriguez asked about the budget surplus, and I think he said we're going to have between a two to four million dollar surplus, is that right?
Two and a half to four.
Okay. So is that surplus already included in the budget for next year, or is that just set aside?
No, you don't include it in the budget. That one is in the budget now, at the end of the year, goes to fund balance. Whatever left goes to fund balance.
And so when does that add it to the fund balance?
At the end of the year. So when the auditors finish the audit, they confirm it, how much it is, the exact amount, and then it's added to the budget for the fund balance for next year.
And when will that be?
August thirty first.
Well, it happens in December or January, whenever we approve the audit, but it's retroactive back to September one, when the new year starts.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if we were to do, so everyone must to get, right now, the stipends are, we're budgeting around four hundred dollars per person, right, somewhere at three twenty-five. So it'd be like six hundred dollars, so adding an extra like one point two million to the budget, right, something like that.
What you said, please?
I said, so right now, if we're adding eight hundred, right now, with the four hundred dollar increase, we're adding around eight hundred thousand dollars to the budget.
Right, yes.
If you're trying to get to a thousand, we don't have the budget for another thousand, it's just an additional six hundred per person. So it's, we're needing to find an additional one point two million, something like that, right?
Well, yeah, we have, on the list that I have for employees, it's two thousand three hundred and three. So we make it a thousand, that becomes two point three million dollars needed total. So that, we need about another one point four, one point six million dollars.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, since Dr. Rodriguez mentioned the budget surplus, we could get the extra stipend money out of the budget surplus without affecting the current year, and this future year's budget.
Yeah, it would have to be, that's what I said from fund balance, yes. It would have to come from there. For the fund balance.
Yeah.
But Andres, you go ahead.
The fund balance, you're going to have three million, and normally, what I would do when I was superintendent there, that fund balance, after it was declared a fund balance for that year, it will come back into whatever project were needed. It could be a facility, or in this case, it could be part of your salaries. So you've got three million dollars that you didn't expect. If you could have spent all the money this year on every account, the three million dollars, again, when the auditors approve this, you're going to have three or four million dollars to use for either facilities or projects, or to go back, as we have been discussing, and use that for salaries. So you've got that money to be spent. And you're very fortunate, because many districts, actually, they go into the red with the budget for that particular year. You've all did a good job in having now the savings of three or four million dollars that you can get put back into projects you need.
Now, if I may add, one of the things that we've been trying to do with the surpluses at the end of the year is to add to the fund balance, so that we can have the three months that TA asks us to have. Right now, we have only two months, two point one months or so of expenditures, in case there's a, this is one situation, like you said. We need to make a lot of expenditures, not just an amount that we're going to give to employees. If we need a big amount, we've got a fund balance to get it. If for whatever reason TA couldn't give us any money, we have money from there to pay for two months or three months. So they wanted to have three months, we only have two. So that's one of the things we've been trying to do also with the surplus. Just for that, you know that. But to remind you of that, I know you know that.
No, no, we know that. You need the three months. But normally, again, you've been able to survive the last few years with not a three months.
Yes, yes.
You've been able to do it. So again, you know, you have to be cautious in how you use the money. Either you can use it for the savings, the three months, or you can use it where you need it. And every year is different.
Yes, I agree, sir. I concur.
And it's like Mr. Lopez mentioned, that, you know, rainy day fund, and like Dr. Jaime mentioned, the surplus is, say, three and a half million, and Mr. Kennedy said we would need one point four, so we'll still not using the whole amount of the savings, we're just using part of it if we need to use it in December for the incentive for the stipend. So, good points. Andres, continue.
That's not fund balance. Touching the surplus from the year, is that my correct saying that?
Well, you could say, we use it from the surplus of this year, next year, but the correct way is fund balance.
Okay, but the.
Close to the next one.
In reality, we're not touching the fund balance, we're just not going to be adding to it.
That's a way that you could say is.
Impossible, because you're very good at saving money, but we have to help our employees, and we're going to have to do that, so. All right. Great. Continue, Andres.
Yes, sir. Hi. Okay. And just for information, these are the pay raises we had last year for the nineteen twenty year. Last year, we, for teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses, we approved thirty-four hundred dollars, thirty-six hundred dollars, thirty-eight hundred and four thousand for the pay raises that they receive based on the years of experience. For professional staff, minor trades, technical trades, bus drivers, they've received seven percent from the midpoint. And administrators, we received a five percent increase from the midpoint. Not just information of what we did last year, but you all approved. The next slide, these are some projects that we have, that we might need in the next five years, that we will need in the next five years, we cannot in the budget. The budget that we have, they're not having any money transferred to the construction fund, because we don't have money for it. But we will need some of these projects, either from fund balance or loan. But the major project here is the roofing, district-wide roofing. We still have schools that we need to add, that need the roofs replaced completely. HVAC control district-wide, replacement of HVAC systems district-wide, we need to fill out the existing parking lots and restryple them. The pavilions, maintenance, and pit control district-wide, from the pavilion we had before, the one that we did recently. We need to continue installing our torches, water fixtures. And also, we need a new building for transportation, custodial, maintenance, energy management, and the warehouse, those are the areas that flood every time we have a lot of rain. And all these projects are needed for sometime within the next five years. And that's money that we don't have, that we will need.
Okay, Andres, a good idea on this. I know that you have loans, but maybe on the update, you can put down what kind of loans you have, and when they're due, when they're finished, when they're being paid. But also, I think the board needs to look at all of this, come up with an amount, and then look at getting a good loan that you can pay back in ten, fifteen years, and get the projects you need. But I think with each project that you listed here, you can get them from your budget, you can get them from fund balance. You're going to need a loan. There's either a bond election, or there's a loan. And I think with a loan, you can go better, borrow the money you need, and then pay it back within fifteen, twenty years.
Yes, maintenance tax note.
Yes.
Yeah, we borrow fifteen million before, we were able to obtain seventy million out of that loan for the project that we did, and we're still working on. Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments on this?
You can include somewhere in there, you and I talked about it last week, the business department, that building there is very, very old, and I think the staff is there, they're very crowded. And I think it's something that you also look at, and perhaps a building for them, where you can go ahead and get them up to par with everybody else. Is there just one more item you can add to this list?
We will add it. Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Okay. Care Act, I had given you some information last week. We, I had told the board that the application will be sent Friday, it was sent till today, we ran out of time working on it. Oh, it was emailed today to TA. The amount that, from the six point six, seven million dollars that we had allocated to us, the district will keep ninety-nine point fourteen percent of it, and the remaining amount will go to two private nonprofit schools that are not in the area, that will work with that on the grant. Yeah, the amount will be used to reimburse the district for payroll that we incurred in the months of April and May, as part of the pandemic. And I had mentioned last time, I did not put it in this slide, that the state, because they were short on the revenues on self-tax, because businesses were closed, the state did not collect enough sales tax, and also the oil prices affected. So the budget for the state was in a deficit, for lack of a better word. So they used the money from the Care Act, extra grant amount, for all the school districts. And that amount, they used it instead of, they replaced, or better word, it's supplanted, state foundation revenues that we were entitled to, for a part of an attendance for a temple. They cut it from there. So, because we have this grant, they cut the state funds. And we're going to use the grant instead to replace that money. Isn't that extra money for us? Or we had to submit the grant to get the benefit of that amount, otherwise, we would have lost the six point six million dollars amount in this grant. And I mentioned that coronavirus relief fund grant, that one will reimburse seventy-five percent of eligible expenditures spent between March thirteen, two thousand twenty, and May twenty, two thousand twenty. It's for items like sanitation, the schools, whenever we bought extra stuff to sanitize, and masks that we bought, those items qualify for reimbursement, and we'll be filing an application for that grant in September. You have any comments or questions on this?
Or? Does, on this one, of the Corona X Relief Fund, does that include technology or not?
No, not in this one, Mr. Nieto, because we did not buy any technology between March thirteen and May twenty. Those are the days that they wanted us, and we're still checking the record, make sure if there's anything that we bought, we can use it. But also, the answer was ordered before or after. So that's why we were not counting on anything for technology.
All right. Any other questions, board members, Dr. Rivera?
Uh, no.
Coach Quer?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
And Mr. Lopez?
Andres, is there any possibility that you would be able to put air purification systems on those grants?
I'm not sure. The second grant, the first grant, no. I already used it for payroll. But we're not getting money for it, we can spend in the futures, reimbursing sort of what we spent. On this one, it's money spent in those dates, so anything after that is not covered. I don't know, anything else available right now? There's a couple of the grants that they're talking about, but we don't have the details yet, so based on these two, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you finished, or you continue still, Andres?
Yeah, the last slide is the timeline that we have, after the public hearing, we have the special board meeting. And this one, we gave you a copy of the budget, the book that we sent you over the weekend.
Yes, we do.
Let me see, I need to. I'm going to start presenting briefly, so that I can grab my files that I need to show you. Okay, going back. Okay, do you see the slide that I have? That is the one on the budget book? Okay, this one shows on the top, the section before the. Okay, this one shows on the top, the section before the blue highlight, is the revenues. This has the general fund, special revenue fund. Special revenue fund again. Debt service fund and capital project fund. The general fund, which is on the column with a number 10 on top. And the debt service fund, the column with the 50 on top. Those are the two governmental funds that the board needs to approve in the budget. And that's what's presented on the agenda that we submitted to you. So those are the only two that the board approves. Special revenue, those are the federal programs and state grants that we have. And also, the capital projects, that's what I call the local construction fund. Those budgets are not approved by the board. We do, those we approve them at the administration level. There's no requirement from the board to approve them. On the general fund. The revenues are 175,776,721 dollars. And made up of local revenues, almost 25 million. State revenues, 137.4 million. And 13.4 million of federal revenues. The expenditures are the same amount. 175,776,721 dollars. And it's broken down in all the functions where we use it. The largest amount is instruction as normal. That's what we have the teachers. And that are all the amount. The column 50, debt service. Shows 1,252,027 dollars. For total revenue. Of which 593,000 are the property tax collections. And interest revenue that we have on the account. And the expenditures are 3,958,075. And that is the payment of the bonds that we have. The total for the debt service fund is a deficit of 2,706,000. But we don't have enough revenue for it. But as I mentioned before, we transfer money from the local maintenance fund to debt service. And we transfer in 2 million that you all approved on August the 10th. So the fund balance at the end of August 31. Will have 3,309,000 in it. So after we cover the deficit, we will have 603,000 dollars left at the end of next year. Assuming we collect all the revenues the way we have them in the budget. So the general fund is the balanced budget. The debt service is not, but we're funding it from fund balance, as shown here. Do you have any comments on it? On this?
Dr. Rivera, any comments?
But very good job, Andres. You know, you and the staff. To have a balanced budget. And then to have a surplus at the end of the year. All of you have done a very, very good job. I commend all of you.
Thank you, sir. I'll pass it along to myself. They're listening too.
Any other comments from any other board members? All right, continue, Andres.
And that, that the end of the presentation, Mr. Nieto.
Oh, okay. Well, like Dr. Rivera mentioned, good job, Dr. Andres and your department for the presentation and Dr. Canales. We'll go to item four. Public comments on proposed 2020, 21 budget and tax rate. At this time, if anybody has any comments, please log on and you can. Present any comments that you might have. I'll give you about 30 seconds. Anybody that would like to make any comments at this time? All right. This concludes the public hearing. Dr. Canales, correct?
Yes, Mr. Canales.
Okay, can I make one comment? Not, nothing of the numbers. I would also like to recognize and thank Mr. Segura and the Human Resources Department. Mr. De La Rosa for Risk Management Department. And Carlos Martinez and his staff, because they helped us a lot on putting all the budget together. With the information.
Thank you very much to Mr. Segura and who else, Mr. De La Rosa. And of course, the Red Cross Department and for all the hard work and Mr. Martinez.
That's a big part, putting everything together.
And it takes a team to figure out all this money, Andres, and Dr. Rivera knows that you're doing an excellent job.
It's a team effort. And it's also your staff. Your staff. They did a very good job.
Thank you.
Today's my granddaughter's ninth birthday, so I'm gonna have to leave the meeting. I'm gonna do a little party for her. So I approve the budget and the tax rate and whenever you get to those, again, good job to all of you. So I'm gonna leave the meeting now. Again, thank you.
Okay, wish your granddaughter a happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, so we get adjourned at 6:40. Don't log off. We'll log on unless you do a few minutes, we'll continue with the regular board meeting. Yes? Very okay? All right. Okay. All right, we're ready to get started, Dr. Canales. And fellow board members and other personnel that are logged on.
Yes, Mr. Nethan.
All right. Good evening. I'm Mr. Nieto, President of Wesco, is the Board of Trustees. On March 16, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by the Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend certain open meeting law requirements to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to COVID-19. In accordance with the law, notice that this meeting of the Board of the Wesco Independent School District has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the Board are not gathered in a central physical location, there will be a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. The Board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. The live audio of this meeting is being broadcast live and online. As we would at any person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be called at the telephone number they have provided to speak up to up to five minutes. All other meeting procedures will be adhered to Board of Adapted Procedures to the extent possible. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties as we ask for your patience as we navigate these conditions. The time is now 6:43. And I will call this regular board meeting to order. I will now call the name of each board member who will acknowledge their presence by saying here. Mr. Patrick Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Dr. Jaime?
Here.
Mr. Andrew González?
Here.
Mr. Erasmo López?
Here.
Coach Cuéllar?
Here.
And myself, Mr. Nieto, represent the quorum today. Public comments? We don't have any public comments today. Item number four. Discussion on Air Purification System. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, this item has come up as a topic before and has been requested for more information by Mr. López. Our staff has been looking into the air purification systems and are here to present what we know about them at this time. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Oscar Ruias.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. I also have Mr. Americo Gasa to help with some of this information. So Americo, are you on? Americo? Okay. Mr. Nieto, Board President, the members of the Board. As Dr. Canales mentioned, we are looking into indoor air quality improvements as a basis for just providing more support for our staff, for our students. For healthier indoor environments, if you will. And so we are, we are reviewing two different options. One of them is, of course, the UV lighting, which is the recommended, the most, the best way, if you will. And then also, we're looking at the ionization. Method of providing air quality improvement. We have just started looking at these two possible variables to use for maintaining healthier indoor environment through adequate ventilation. And so we will, you know, with your, with all due respect, we will be providing more information to Dr. Canales and Board here and then within the next future to include also potential costs and means of acquiring some of this equipment that we, we want to implement in our, in our schools.
Okay. Mr. López, I believe you had a couple of questions on this.
I did. I have questions, concerns, and I feel that that all of our schools sooner than later need to be retrofitted to have this, the air purification or air quality improvement system. And Dr. Canales and Andres, I'm not talking about next year, I'm talking about now. We need to get information, we need to get the cost, we need to get it before the Board so it can be approved. And as a matter of fact, next meeting, I want some more information and bring information. I know Dr. Canales got a letter from one of the, some vendor that in regards to this systems. But we need to make our employees feel safer at work or at school than they are at home. They need to understand that the air quality in our schools is pure, it's safe. And that they're okay coming into work. It's gonna happen, we're gonna come back to work sooner or later. But we need to prepare and get, we already have some of our staff in our abilities, as a matter of fact. And, and I don't want this to drag on. I don't want a year process and then just put it for bids. We need to get this, I feel this is an emergency and it needs to happen. Am I clear on that or do I need to continue?
No, that's actually, that's a clear detail, Mr. López. Especially in this time of this pandemic. I think it's very important that you have a good air purification system at all schools. And I think we'll move forward. Dr. Canales?
Yes, Mr. Nieto. So we will be prepared the next time with more information about the purification filtration systems. I don't know, Mr. Garza, Americo, I see you on now. Have you, we're gonna add anything else?
Dr. Canales, before Mr. Garza adds anything, I wanted to also just comment that I feel this is extremely important, like Mr. López mentioned. And I guarantee you, Dr. Canales and Board, that I will have information to you for this week's board update, guaranteed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruias. Americo? Any additional comments, Mr. Americo Garza?
We can't hear you, Mr. Garza.
As we wait, any additional comments from any of the other board members, Mr. González or Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, what buildings currently have the system in favor?
Okay, Mr. Garza, that's a good question. So currently, the only building that, am I still on, yes? The only building that has a purification system is the brand-new Wesco High School football field house. Because they're retrofitted as such because of, not just COVID, but staff infections and things of that nature. So that is the only current building that has it, so. Any new buildings, we do have plans for future projects that we have that need HVAC replacements. Anything new, of course, we're gonna, we're gonna retrofit already accordingly. But right now, that's the only building, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. My mic wasn't working. Good evening, everyone. Yes, as coaches mentioned right now, every piece of new equipment that we do get, we're making sure that we retrofit it with. At this point, we're using UV lighting as a form of air disinfection and air purification type of system. And we will provide more information on the other technologies. But we are ensuring that anything that comes in right now, that's brand new, comes in with air purification system. And also, we will work on a plan, a program to retrofit the existing systems that we have in place. If I may add, guys, gentlemen, the availability is gonna be very important on this project. Because if we can get one or the other, and they both do the same, but one of them is gonna be six months down the road and the other one is ready to go, we need to go with the one that's ready to go. Is we, we're, don't need to drag our feet on this. Yes, sir, absolutely. We'll, we'll make sure that we expedite everything and the purchases and everything that we need to do to get those systems retrofitted.
Yeah, Mr. López, we will do the research. I know there's different research pieces and studies that have been done, so we'll do research. We'll look at the most efficient, like all of you, we want all our employees to feel safe at work. These are different times. And so, you know, I'd love to do research as well, and I know they do. So we'll be looking at everything and then coming with a presentation that includes pros and cons of the different systems, including timeframe, so that we can keep everybody informed about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, any comments?
No, I personally don't know a lot about air purification systems. But I'm interested to see what you could find on the update, Coach. And I appreciate Mr. López bringing this to the attention of the Board. Thank you.
Coach Cuéllar?
No. This has been addressed, so everyone is aware of what's expected. And obviously, you wanna do what's best for all our employees and students and, you know, all our employees and students, period.
Dr. Jaime?
Yes, Coach, you know, yes, I do think, you know, the information is needed. But at the same time, you know, let's not lose sight of some of the other items that can make our staff and students feel safe, you know, whether it's the hand washing stations, the PPE sanitizer, you know, materials for our janitors to make sure they're disinfecting buildings where we have positive cases. So let's not lose sight of that, you know, because I think those, those products will also help our staff and students feel safe along with something like an air purification system.
Thank you, Dr. Jaime. Any final comments, Mr. López?
No, I agree with Dr. Ruias as far as not losing sight on the, on the little details. Because they do add, everything helps. And ultimately, our goal is to make our teachers and our students safer in our school buildings, and they are anywhere else.
All right, so Dr. Canales, you and your staff will follow up on this recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Nieto, we will.
All right, we'll continue with item five. The question and possible action to designate a delegate and an alternate representative to serve on the 2020 TASB Delegate Assembly. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, the assembly is held annually. And is the foundation of the association's governance structure and provides critical direction as the association represents members' interests before state and national policymakers. The assembly this year is especially important as delegates will approve the advocacy agenda for the upcoming legislative session. So there are some key changes for this year's assembly. They include the delegates will be asked to vote on the 2020 Assembly Standing Rules in early September. And the delegates and alternates are invited to attend one of three virtual conferences and orientation meetings set for September 16, 17, and 18. Last year, our delegates were Dr. Richard Reveda and the alternate was Patrick Kennedy. These forums are due to TASB by September the 2nd. So we are recommending, Board of Trustees, that you designate a delegate and alternate and alternate representative to serve on the 2020 TASB Delegate Assembly during the TASA TASB Convention, which will be virtual this year on September 30 through October the 2nd.
Any, any, any Board members that would like to volunteer?
Well, I would just say that Dr. Reveda was an excellent delegate last year. If you'd like to do it again, I'm okay with that.
Well, you know what, I know Dr. Reveda is busy, so I will take the delegate. But I would ask somebody to be the alternate representative. And because all the meeting is gonna be virtual anyway. So I wouldn't mind. So I wouldn't mind unless one of you would like to be the delegate, I don't mind that either.
I'll make a motion to to nominate Mr. Nieto as our delegate.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by uh Mr. Kennedy and a second by uh Coach Quer to nominate nominate Mr. Nieto as the delegate. Uh any discussion? No discussion? Uh motion to approve? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. I would like to uh have a nomination for the alternate representative to serve on the 2020 uh TASB Board. Anybody who would like to volunteer as the alternate? Edgar?
I'll do the alternate.
So do we need a motion, Mr. Kerr, or uh since uh Mr. Andrew Gonzalez is the volunteer?
Uh motion and second.
I'll vote to nominate Mr. Andrew Gonzalez as our alternate.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Coach Quer uh for Mr. Gonzalez to be the alternate. Uh thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Continue with uh item six.
We need a vote.
Oh, my fault. Uh let's uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. All right, item six. Discussion and possible action to approve the revised T test professional appraisal calendar and timeline for the 2020-21 school year. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, an adjustment needs to be made to the calendar for T test appraisals uh from the one that you approved in July due to the delayed instructional start of the year. And we will be starting October, August 31st, which is next Monday. So this is just revisions to the calendars for appraisals. The appraisal period is September 8th through March 26th, 2021, moving that to September 14th through March 26th, 2021. We're prohibiting formal observation dates, uh moving the August 24th through September 4th to August 31st through September 11th, since we start on August 31st for instruction. And the teacher self-report no later, moving to September 18th to September 25, 2020. And the formal observation uh moving no earlier than September 8th to September 14th, 2020. So we're recommending that the board approves the revised T test professional appraisal calendar and timeline for the 2020-21 school year.
I'd love to approve the recommended uh T test calendar.
Your mic is muted, Mr. Nieto.
All right, let's go again. Uh we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Coach Quer to approve the revised T test professional appraisal calendar and timeline for the 2020-21 school year. As I call your name, please say aye if you approve, Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Lopez? Mr. Quer? Motion carries. Item uh seven. Discussion of possible action to approve revisions to local policy DBD local employment requirements and restriction conflict of interest, non-school employment. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, at the August 10th, 2020 um meeting, Dr. Richard Riveda, our Board Vice President, imparted employees working outside employment as a potential conflict of interest for the district. Specifically, outside employment requirements and restrictions addressing outside employment not be conducted during work hours, duty hours, or that they interfere with employees' job responsibilities. Mrs. Melva Seguera worked on revising this local policy, it's DBD local. And the highlights changes to this policy are on page two of two of the policy. And so we're recommending um that you do approve the revisions of local policy DBD employment requirements and restrictions, conflict of interest for non-school employment.
The only issue I have with the with the warning is that it says employees shall not participate in approved outside employment activities during hours. They're required to perform district-related work tasks, but uh it doesn't say anything about participating in non-approved employment activities. In other words, there's no prohibition, specific prohibition against working in non-approved, even though I think it would be implied, but it's missing that language.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, so repeat that again? So so the the word employees shall not participate in approved outside employment activities during hours are required to perform district-related work.
I I would recommend taking out the word approved and just leave it, shall not participate in outside employment activities during hours. It it, in other words, the word approved creates some ambiguity between, well, say they were working at something that wasn't previously approved by the supervisor, that's a loophole.
Well, I think it's, Mr. Kennedy, I think what it's specifically referring to as approved is the, just the previous sentence we're talking about. If the supervisor determines that the outside employment is, doesn't create a potential conflict of interest, then it's, it's a fact of approved. But even if it is approved, they cannot engage in it if it would be during the hours they'd be required to work for the district. What I don't know, I don't know if there's a separate policy that we have that addresses um although I think we do, do we know if there's a separate policy that addresses outside employment generally, even if it doesn't conflict with with the work schedule? I believe we do somewhere. And and does any outside employment have to be improved, approved by supervisor?
We would do, Mr. Her, we need to move the policy real quickly for that one.
Because there's gonna be policy somewhere that says other outside employment has to be approved. And this this last sentence, Mr. Kennedy, is just elaborating on, if it is approved, you can't do it during the during the conflicting school hours.
Okay, we'll take, uh we'll take.
Is this something that maybe we can, able it so y'all can look if there's another uh somewhere in the DBD local as far as uh outside the district? So that it answers uh Patrick's concern as far as the approved?
How about, I don't have a problem removing the the approved language anyway, I don't know that it changes it necessarily, but while we're here, I I'll take a look at that anyway, and I'll get back to you later in the meeting. But I mean, if y'all wanna approve it with Patrick or Mr. Kennedy's uh suggestion to remove approved, that's that's fine, too.
It's okay to call me Patrick, that's all right. Well, if you're okay with it, I I'm all right with it. I would just, you know, like if I had, for example, if I had a client that I was representing the grievance and and I was representing him in something that wasn't prior approved, that's how I would attack it. I don't know how strong the attack would be, but that's, that's what I would do. I would say, well, it wasn't prior approved, so this thing didn't uh this particular policy doesn't prohibit that. But like I said, that's just one avenue.
Well, it 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 doesn't do anything substantively if you pick out approved, so y'all can approve it, y'all can approve this policy change with Mr. Kennedy's suggestions, and I don't think that'll weaken it at all.
I tell you what, I I feel like we can just approve it today, and then if they find uh an issue with it, we can always come back and amend it later if we need to. I'll make a motion to approve the the language.
Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Gonzalez to approve revisions to local policy DBD local employment requirements and restriction conflict of interest, non-school employment. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye when I call your name, but Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Lopez? Motion carries. Item number eight, we'll continue. Discussion of possible action to approve the application to the Texas Education Agency for 40% hybrid instruction for the ninth through 12th grade students. Uh waiver for the 2020-21 school year. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, this item is offered for high schools with ninth through 12th grades. And it that it allows them to establish a less than daily on-campus attendance schedule as a sole offering for students in one or more high school campuses in order to reduce the number of individuals on a campus at any one time. And increase the total number of students served on an on-campus setting. So this would be when we start the on-campus instruction again. We must ensure that on-campus attendance is offered as part of the hybrid schedule at least 40% of the days in each grading cycle. So the state does require us to submit this waiver, allowing for this um hybrid for the ninth through 12th grades. This would apply, and we're proposing the hybrid schedule to be in place for the school year for Wesaco High School, Wesco East High School, and CT Early College High School. So we're seeking your approval to submit this application to the Texas Education Agency for the 40% campus hybrid instruction for ninth grade students waiver for this school year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the application to the Texas A- uh agency for 40% hybrid instruction for the ninth to 12th grade students. Uh it's a waiver for the 2021 school year. Any discussion?
Dr. Canales, uh did you, did you say that this would be the sole option once we go back to in-person?
No, it it would take effect once we went back to in-person, so that we could reduce the number of students at where we have the large, large schools, like the high schools with 2,000 plus, so that we wouldn't have to have all those kids. If if all the students wanted to be done the same day, on the same day, we could do a hybrid.
But but do parents still have the option to keep uh their student at home?
Yes, sir. There's a choice.
Any uh any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Kennedy. When I call out your name, please say aye if you approve. Mr. Kennedy? Dr. Jaime? Mr. Lopez? Coach Quer? Motion carries. Let's continue to item nine. Discussion of possible action to approve the 2020-21 WISCOI is the asynchronous instruction plan for remote learning. Dr. Canales.
Hey, Board of Trustees, as we get ready to start on August 31st, which is next Monday, with instruction, we are starting remote. The Texas Education Agency is requiring school districts who are submitting for asynchronous instruction planning to have a plan. And TEA, the first step is the board approval of this plan, the second step is TA approval. TA can come back to us and say, once they look at the plan, give us feedback, they're rating it against a rubric for four things. Instructional schedule, materials design, student progress, and implementation. So our principals, CFS, CNI strategists, Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Aguilad and I have been involved, including the Teaching and Learning Continuum Design Committee, to develop this plan. Our principals have sought feedback from um staff on their campus. The next step is to get you to approve, which we are recommending that you approve, the 2020-21 asynchronous instruction plan for remote learning for students in Wesaco ISD. We'll submit the online application, which includes an attestations and responses to open-ended questions by the agency. The agency will review the plan, and if approved, they will, uh we will continue to receive funding for asynchronous attendance and after the end of the grace period. So we're seeking your um approval of this plan, so we can send it to the agency and have them rated and get back to us and hopefully approve it.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, correct?
Yes, sir.
And a second by Mr. Gonzalez to approve the 2021 WISCOI is the asynchronous instruction plan for remote learning. Any discussion? All right, uh let's entertain a vote. Uh Mr. Kennedy? Dr. Jaime? Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Lopez? Coach Quer? Motion carries. We'll continue with item uh 10. Discussion of possible action to approve 2021 WISCO ISD synchronous attestation summary for remote learning. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, so remote learning can be asynchronous or synchronous. This one is for the synchronous part. And we are required um to have an additive attestation summary to ensure that our district is delivering the Texas essential knowledge and skills in their instruction when we're synchronous. That's when the teacher is facilitating its face-to-face, live, real-time instruction. And um that the instruction, the Texas-aligned instruction must be accessible and provide support to all students, educators, and parents. The synchronous instruction attestations would meet the following. Student and family support, educator support, tech support and access, and instructional frame uh framework. Our uh additive attestation summary ensures that all Wesaco ISD students, educators, and parents will have engaging learning opportunities aligned to the grade level, state curriculum, and expectations that will allow our students to successfully complete their current grade and be prepared for the next level of learning. So we're seeking your approval of the 2020-21 Wesaco ISD synchronous attestation summary for remote learning. And again, we must attest that the commitments specified in the rationale are being met as it at the, as the date of the attestation is submitted to TEA. So we need your approval on this one as well, so we can submit it to the agency.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve the 2021 WISD synchronous attestation summary for remote learning. Any discussion?
Yes. Have we been able to um address every everyone's uh
Technology?
Ability to uh for the hotspots and and uh the techn- technological equipment necessary to get started on time, because I I I ask, I I understand there's a, there's a waiting list uh for hotspots. I was, I was told. And I thought we had purchased a bunch of them to to take care of all of our.
We, Mr. uh Mr. Guad, yes, we did, we did purchase twice. We came to you at the board requesting to purchase highs, uh hotspots. So we have some numbers that were recent today, and I'm Mr. Aguilar or Mr. Martinez, do you have those available?
I'll have uh Carlos Martinez, you can talk on the numbers, but uh, Mr. Quer, let me go ahead and give you some feedback on that. We have a a good, strong staff that's been working on keeping tabs of our hotspot distribution per campus. Uh we have a good, solid team with technology, as well as uh Dr. Cantu has been assisting, Ms. Renee Dyer, Library Services, they've all been very involved with our principals. Uh we've done very well in the distribution, they've been sending it out in phases. Uh they've been keeping us up to date on their distribution counts. This includes students who are coming outside our district through open enrollment are receiving those. What's happening is we're getting new enrollment, it's coming in, so the numbers may be off slightly, but we're narrowing it down. I know Dr. Cantu was working on that spreadsheet. But they should be low numbers, and we're still working on that. Um if there is a need for additional, hopefully tomorrow, we'll clean up those numbers. And then we'll go ahead and uh work on that, Andres Sanchez, but they've done a wonderful job staying on top of it and distributing those counts.
Yeah, well, I just bring it up, because you know, I I wanna be sure that when we start school, that everyone has a fair advantage and and uh it's it's not gonna lose uh or or fall behind, because we're not servicing you know, what we need to service uh through these hotspots and the technological equipment and so forth, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh we're working on it, and we're looking at it daily. Uh I know our campus administration, our principals are doing a wonderful job staying on top of it with their families, and they're keeping in communication with our uh central office staff. So you know, we're working in sync to make sure that we get all the families uh with uh the uh hotspots that they need. And and we're working on, same thing as the Chromebooks, you know, we're working on that as well.
Yeah, and the question about the hotspots and the devices is on the registration. So for the sixteen thousand, I think sixteen thousand two hundred students who've registered, we will have more students trickling in. And I know that the team has been working. You know, in some cases, you know, we're going to make sure that at least every family has one, and then we'll look at the number of users as we go on, and we may come to the board and ask for some more if a family has, I think we have the number of like six students that need to connect to it, or four, we may start looking to recruit additional hotspots for that as well. And we could find ourselves, our enrollment really spikes, we could find ourselves without having that information in the system that we currently have because we're relying strongly on the online registration with those questions.
Coach Cuellar, those are good points, and yes, we need to make sure that our students are ready for day one with the technology availability and of course the Chromebook. All right, so we have a motion by Dr. Jaime, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve the 2021 WISD synchronous attestation summary for remote learning. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll take a vote. Say aye when I mention your name, Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Cuellar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's continue to item 11. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's ranking recommendation for the design and replacement of the HVAC controls of Wesco East High School Project, RFQ number 200107. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, we are recommending that you approve administration's ranking recommendation of proposals received for the design and replacement of the HVAC controls at Wesco East High School Project. Approved by the board of the ranking of these companies constitutes approval for administration to enter into contract negotiations with the contractor that the board approves as rank number one. If the administration cannot enter into the contract with the contractor ranked number one, administration will proceed to terminate negotiations in writing with contractor ranked number one and will attempt to negotiate and enter into a contract with contractor ranked number two. If the administration cannot enter into a contract with contractor ranked number two, then the administration will terminate negotiations of the project. Just some history with this, was approved on November 11, 2019. The board selected a method of construction for the project. As part of Phase Two, this project administration released a request for proposals to the two finalist companies approved by the board on January 13, 2020. On June 8, 2020, the board approved to modify the criteria and points to be used for the evaluation of proposals. So the scope of the work of this project will exclude the recently built new Van Hong building, the newly remodeled athletics complex, and the HVAC and related roof and improvements at both gyms currently under bid as a separate project. There is a table with the two finalist companies and their ranking, and we do have Mr. Rios, Oscar Rios, and Mr. Armita Garza to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Or do I entertain a motion first?
I'll move to approve the administration's recommendation.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, and a second by Dr. Jaime?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To approve the administration's ranking recommendation for the design and replacement of the HVAC controls at Wesco East High School Project, RFQ number 200107. Any discussion?
What is the cost on that project?
Mr. Just
Question again?
What was the project?
I did not hear what was the cost. I believe it was four hundred thousand, Rico, around there.
I'm bill method of construction, so we do have an estimate, but until we get to the scope of work and a contract, or rather, a proposal from them, which is the next step once the board approves since the finalist, the lone finalist, then we'll enter into negotiations, and then they'll give us a proposal, and we'll have a better idea. But at this point, it's an estimated budget cost of around four hundred thousand or so, yes.
Yeah.
And you have that money available on this?
Yes, on this, it's part of them, 2017, minus tax note.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Dr. Jaime. Please entertain your vote whenever I call your name. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Cuellar?
Aye.
Motion carries. We continue with item 12. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of electrical repairs at the Wesaco High School R-Wing with a cost of up to $27,000. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, there were some problems with the electricity at Wesaco High School that after Hurricane Hannah. So considering the scope of work to repair the shorts stamp, there was a shortage. It was ordered to outsource the job in an effort to expedite the process. There's two options. The first option will be attempted in hopes of finding the electrical short close to the, close to main disconnect switch, which is in an area that is not covered with concrete. So if that happens, and that's where it happened, the cost would be about $9,655. The second option will be implemented if the problem is not resolved through the first option. The second option consists of replacing all the wire from the main disconnect switch to the main electrical panel of the R-Wing, and that cost would be $26,270. So the second repair, that's the amount. So we're asking for that you approve the electrical repairs at Wesco High School R-Wing with a cost of up to $27,000 to cover in case option two is needed. And the team is here if you have any questions.
Dr. Canales, if I will, we did get notice today, this afternoon, that it seems that option one is going to be, is going to take care of the problem. But we thought, let's just keep the item just in case, you know, we don't, you know, but Central Electric did notify us that they feel pretty comfortable that option one will suffice and will take care of the problem. But, but I guess just out of
Caution.
A month of caution, just keep the item, and then hopefully, maybe by the end of the week, we might be able to provide a board update and let our board know that option one was the extent of it.
Okay. Who was that, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Lopez to approve the electrical repairs at the Wesco High School R-Wing with a cost of up to $27,000. Any other discussion? All right, we'll take it for a vote. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Cuellar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue right along with item 13. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the final amended budgets for the general fund and debt service fund for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, so the official adopted budget with the amendments must be filed with TA through the PMS, the Public Education Information Management System. Budget amendments are mandated by the state for budgeted funds to reallocate them from one function level to another if needed. The school district must amend the official budget before exceeding a functional expenditure category. This must be done before the end of the fiscal year, which is August 31, 2020, to make sure all of the functional expenditure levels are in legal compliance with the TA Financial Accountability Systems Resource Guide. The final amended budget will appear in the comprehensive annual financial report, which includes the annual audit and compliance report. So there are some amendments to the general fund budget. Mr. Sanchez, do you want to cover these?
Yeah, Dr. Canales. Oh, no. The budget that we have on page page five, the last three pages include the detail of the general fund. You know, I'll work on there. We had mentioned to the board that the ESER grant that takes $6.7 million out of the state revenues, and we had to, we were going to move it to the ESER grant fund. So we had to move the payroll, of course, we're going to use the grant for the payroll, but we're taking amount for payroll for teachers. So we, you can see a lot of items on function, function 11 that we took out. We also have the early education grant that we didn't spend all the money in it because we made some adjustments on the grant, so there's some amount that we did not spend, but we also made a reduction on those expenditures. And there's, we mentioned also the unemployment compensation insurance amount that we might have an increase on it, so we went through all the functions, and we picked up amounts, and we added to the functions. The accounts that are listed here are not necessarily the accounts that need the increase or decrease. We just selected some accounts from the, within the function to make the entry for us to prepare it easier. There's a transaction like that in here. On the revenues, going back to page one of the last three pages, we have increases on taxes. We have almost half a million dollars more collections in taxes. Because I had budgeted, like I said, ninety-two percent, and we collected by ninety-five, so there's an increase in that. We have a decrease of $350,000 for interest income because I mentioned the rates went down a lot, but we did not collect as much as we expected to have. And we go back and forth like that. There's a credit of 8.8 million on foundation revenues. That is the amount of the ESER grant and the early education amount that we're decreasing. On the left side, we have, for example, $132 million there. Do you see the increase of $132 million? And also the increase of the indirect cost, those are the amount that we bumped up because we needed to increase them. And like that, we selected accounts from throughout the whole budget for this. And we wanted to make sure, like Dr. Canales read, that we are, our expenditures are covered within function so that we're not in the deficit at the end of the year when the auditors finish the audit. Basically, that's what it is.
Board of trustees, we are recommending your approval of the 2019-2020 fiscal year final amended budget for the general fund as presented by Mr. Sanchez.
Is this going to include the stipends that we talked about for all staff? Andres?
I'm sorry, what stipends are you talking about, Mr. Lopez?
The stipends that we talked about at the workshop, is that it? Does this budget include?
No, no, that's not included here. This is the current budget. The other proposed budget is coming up, is not this agenda item. That's not included. It's only for the year.
Mr. Lopez, you're referring to the one-time payments we discussed in the hearing, but this is the 2019-2020 final amended that we're approving. We'll be addressing the 2020-2021 budgets, and we'll address the one-time payments there.
Good.
I'll second.
That was Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
And a second by Dr. Jaime?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and a second by Dr. Jaime to approve the final amended budgets for the general fund and debt service fund for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Cuellar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on to item 14. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the WISCO ISD compensation plan for the fiscal year 2020-21 school year. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, we are recommending that you approve the compensation plan for this coming school year for our district. You did receive a copy of the compensation plan on Friday. The changes have been highlighted in red. We have amended some items on a separate sheet that includes red items, and I believe they're in blue on your copy. The compensation plan is reflected in the proposed budget for this fiscal year. So I'd like to thank Miss Seguda has worked on this, and she is available here to highlight some key points, and then we can answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, members of the board. As Dr. Canales mentioned, the compensation plan does reflect changes to last year's compensation plan, and this is based on district needs that have been identified. As Dr. Canales mentioned, you did receive part of your board update on Friday, a draft with revisions or recommendations in red. Today, we added two last final revisions that are, can be found on the last page, page 38, and they're the bottom two highlighted sections. And these are based on identified needs in our district. If you all have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Jaime, and a second by Mr. Kennedy, correct? To approve the WISCO ISD compensation plan for the fiscal year 2020-21 school year. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I know, Andres, we're approving the, this is where we're approving the $400, correct?
No, Mr. Gonzalez, the one-time payments are not indicated in this compensation plan. Yeah, that'll be part of the budget you approve on item 16.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. However, it does include the general athletic and UIL campus club stipends that we generally use the year. Those can be found in this compensation plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Dr. Jaime, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve the WISCO ISD compensation plan for the fiscal year 2020-21 school year. I'll take a vote. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez? Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
All right, Coach Cuellar?
Aye.
Motion carries. We continue to item 15.
Coach.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Neto, I am going to abstain since I am a board member as one of Boys and Girls Club.
I'll note that, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for letting us know. Item 15. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to renew an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Wesco Incorporated for the school year 2020-21 school year. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, the Boys and Girls Club of Wesco, Inc., offered the Boys and Girls Club program at four of our campuses, Memorial Elementary with Old Paul Rudy, Silva Elementary, PFC Marihuana Elementary, and AN Tony Rico Elementary. Administration is recommending approval to renew the agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Wesaco, Inc. for the 2020-2020 school year. The cost of the services is $125 to be paid in $12,500 per month for 10 months from September 2020 through June 202021 at a cost of $31,250 per school. At the beginning of the school year, there will be a meeting with Boys and Girls Club of Wesco, Inc., representatives of four elementary school principals involved, and our Wesco ISD administration to discuss the operation deliverables of this program. There's a copy of the proposed 2021 agreement. The agreement is based on the agreement approved by the board for last fiscal year. The agreement may be modified after further review by legal counsel to reflect operational, operation, operating changes due to COVID-19. So we're recommending that you approve renewal with the Boys and Girls Club of Wesaco, Inc., to provide services to Wesco ISD students at the four elementary schools for the school year, subject to final review of legal counsel. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer.
I'll move to approve the agreement. I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, and a second by Dr. Jaime?
Yes, sir.
To approve, to renew an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Wesco Incorporated for the school year 2020-21 school year. Any discussion?
And just as an add-on to that, I know Dr. Canales said it. And just as an add-on to that, I know Dr. Canales said it, this will be approved, subject to legal approval as well. And I understood your motion to be, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, that, I will amend my motion to include that sentence.
Okay. So no discussion, let's continue with the vote. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Dr. Jaime?
Aye.
Mr., uh, Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Cuellar?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on to item 16. Discussion of possible action, board to consider approval to adopt the district's general fund and debt service fund budget for the fiscal year 2020-21 school year. Dr. Canales?
Board of trustees, um, we are seeking your approval to adopt the district's general fund and debt service fund for budgets for fiscal year, this fiscal year 2020-2021 as presented. The one-time payment incentive will be made in December 2020 to all staff. The contingent, and the way we have it, the contingent additional stipend will be paid only if additional ADA is generated by the district as a whole by the end of the 2020-2021 school year. So this one is for next year's budget. Or this year's budget, we already started it. I'll start September 1st.
What, what are we going to do with stipends, one-time, uh, for teachers and all staff?
Well, Mr. Sanchez, well, you highlight some of the, the points. And we understood, you know, the increase in the one stipends while employing the same amount.
Oh, given the public hearing, we discussed the stipend that we were including in the presentation. And the board indicated that the elector reserve, yeah, option to change the amount in December subject to the district having, uh, additional funding to fund balance of on the budget itself, uh, at a higher amount. And, um, you mentioned also the, the contingent stipend at the end of the year could also be paid if there was additional ADA as indicated in the, the presentation.
Okay, in the, in the workshop, what I understood and, and what I brought across, that I, I was looking for $1,000 for each of our employees. And, uh, there should be support for that and we can, we can talk about that in a little bit. Uh, and then Dr. Rivera came on and said that if there was additional money to be spent out, that the board would have the authority to, uh, to, to provide that to our employees. And, uh, what I'm trying to say is that if there is going to be money, I think that the board has to have a schedule on what it's going to take to, uh, put that out upon board approval or board determination. That's the, you're going to give us the amount and we're going to tell you if, if it's going to, if it's going to be done or not. That's, that's what I got from the workshop. Now, I could be wrong and somebody correct me if I am.
Saying, uh, go, go ahead.
So, so the board has, if the board wants to increase the amount of the one-time, right now, the board needs to identify what amount we want to increase it to. Um, on, on the one-time stipend, if we want to wait and see what it looks like, we can always come back later, but we'd need to have a public hearing if we don't, if we don't approve specifically what we want that amount to be right now.
Well, I'm saying specifically $1,000 per employee. And, and that's because everybody, there were some comments made, Dr., uh, I mean, Mando Cuellar said it, it costs the same to everybody going to the store. And that is correct, that's a very good statement. You know, so it's not a raise because we don't have any money for raises. You know, and we can't afford a raise, yet we need to help our employees in this time hardship and, and, and suffering. Uh, and I feel that $1,000 is justifiable. And Andres, you, we had some discussion as to where you could get the money and, and apparently I felt that you were comfortable with doing that. And that's, I, if it's at $1,000, I will make a motion to approve at $1,000.
I, I like to add, if that is what the board would like to consider, that is fine. There's a couple of items that the agenda item did not have concerning, uh, who qualifies for the payment. Uh, and there's a couple of other items that we, we need to add.
And just, yeah, and just for clarification again, it's a one-time payment incentive.
Yes, one time in December.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Lopez and a second by Mr. Kennedy?
Let, let me, let me do this, can I, can I ask that, um, Mr. Lopez, can I ask that you withdraw the motion and I'll read a motion for you that y'all can, you can so move, is that okay, Mr. Lopez? Just so I can make sure that we get the specific amount, caveat that Mr. Sanchez needs to include.
I will withdraw my motion and, and listen to you, your words.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Kerr.
I took the minute to write it down, let me pull it back up here. Uh, so the motion is going to be to adopt the district's general fund budget as presented with the addition of an increase to the one-time payments to district employees to a total of $1,000. And to adopt the district's debt service fund budget as presented.
That's what I said, wasn't it?
I, I, I want to make sure we have both, that we're, we're, we're referencing it to the general fund budget and separately also approving the debt service budget.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Lopez and a second by Mr. Kennedy to approve with a, and adopt the district general fund and debt service fund budget for the fiscal year 2020-21 school year with additional $1,000 or additional, uh, $1,000 per employee, uh, district employees, correct?
Well, it's not additional, it's total.
Oh, total? Total, yeah, okay, total.
Total of $1,000 one-time payment to the, and that's, that's the, the change to the, um, general.
May I add? Uh, may I add to that amount? Is that going to be $1,000 that we're going to give him, then deduct income tax from that and Medicare?
Yes.
Or do you want it to be at $1,000 net?
No.
Because then we would have to increase it.
No, no, I, I'm, $1,000 deduct the, the Medicare and taxes.
Okay, income tax, okay. It would not be subject to IRS, but, okay.
But it was off, uh, because there was a discussion during, during the, the workshop that if more monies become available at the end of the year, that the board will have the authority to distribute those also to our employees.
Okay.
Uh, we're in the discussion, the, the part about the, the end of the year. Is that the way we had it listed in the, the agenda that he mentions is a contingent stipend, contingent incentive payment? Not subject to what the board wants to change it to. You need to change it now, you want to do that, because you just want to continue with what I had. You will, how more ADA, we'll make the amount.
Then I, I need to, to the, to the schools that do raise their ADA to the predetermined ADA, they will get their, their, their stipend. It's not fair the way you had it last year, that everybody has to make it or nobody gets it. I, I, I don't think that it, it is an incentive to, to increase ADA the way you had it. I think it will be an incentive if you, if you get it by, by campus.
I think what, what Andres is, is asking is, is everyone going to get $1,000 just because they're an employee? Or are we making it contingent on the ADA being accomplished?
No, no, that's, that's, that's.
The, the, the $1,000 is for December, correct, Mr. Lopez?
That is correct.
And for the string, we will follow, uh, what was presented in the compensation plan at, at the workshop, uh, depending on the ADA, but including, uh, each school that qualifies in attainable that ADA percentage, correct, Mr. Lopez?
That is correct. That's correct.
I agree. Mr. Sanchez, if you could provide clarification so, and how that will possibly work? If there's a campus who makes it, but the district doesn't make it, what?
If, if.
Funds to be able to?
If the district as a whole does not get the ADA, there will not be money to pay it unless it is obtained from fund balance.
Okay, so, so, so the, the staff will know that they need to meet the ADA at the end of the year so they can qualify for the additional, uh, amount. They're still going to receive the $1,000 in December, correct, Mr. Lopez and, and Mr. Kerr?
We can make it very easy, just if funds are available.
Well, right now, for the one-time for December, we're saying $1,000. And that's going to be an amendment to our general fund for, and, and again, as Mr. Sanchez said, only for those employees that have been employed for 90 days at that time.
Mr. Sanchez, right now, the.
That's going to be contingent on the ADA.
The second one, yes.
Okay. The ADA, the way you have it set up right now is not on a individual campus basis, correct? It's a district-wide.
Right, yeah.
So the way it's worded right now, you know, it's got to be a district-wide, uh, goal. And I think that's, you know, that's fair also because I think, you know, there's different, it, it's harder for high schools and uh, to meet some of those, uh, attendance requirements compared to elementaries and middle school. So, you know, I think the way you have it right now with a district-wide goal, I think that, that makes sense. Um, you know, if, if we leave it that way, but it's my, my opinion on that.
Yeah, we did not provide any particular percentage of increased attendance for, for the schools.
Correct.
That is the thing that I have.
Which is what you did last time, right? And that's why we ran into that issue where some campuses met it and some didn't.
Yes.
So this one's worded differently, this one's presented differently than the previous. So we wouldn't run into that issue, it would be a district-wide goal and we meet it, everybody gets it.
Well, why don't, why don't we just, just state that if funds become available due, due to an increase in ADA, they will be distributed to the, to the employees? And, and we leave it wide open as to how, it's up to the board as how we're going to do it and, and, and move forward that way. And I know that's doable. Is that doable?
Well, I think that's how it's worded right now, is it, you know, depending on how, what we meet in regards to ADA, different levels. You know, so I think that's pretty much.
We, we, we have it listed as a one-time stipend, but we need to correct that to say one-time incentive payment. And if the ADA is available, we will pay it, so that, that one's already stated. And it will be district-wide ADA, not just by campus.
As long as it's fair.
And, and it has a scale, so there's at least 200 ADA, you get an amount. The only thing is, and that stipend that we have there is, uh, is not the same for everybody. And you've got different amount.
That's, that's where we were going to go across the board, right?
For the December one.
For the December one, yes.
The one in June, the way that agenda item reads is a different amount. It's not the same for everybody.
But the December will be the same for everybody.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, December is the same for everyone. Now, on this, on this final thing that you're trying to propose, I just want to make sure that everybody's going to have the same, you know, fairness and there is, and everybody playing on the same level playing field. You know, because, you know, there, 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 there may be a campus that has a preference over, over another, you know, parents have that option. Um, is that going to be taken to, into account when numbers are all tabulated?
Okay, can you ask me the question again, Mr. Cuellar, please, so make sure I give you the correct answer?
Is every campus going to be on a, on, on the same level playing field? Or are some going to have an advantage over others? In terms of incentives?
No, uh, the, the amount is per employee. What was mentioned before was that at the high schools, like Dr. Rodriguez said, high schools have a harder time getting the, uh, the amount of the ADA, like the amount that we ADA that we asked, we expect for them to, to achieve. A high school, 95%, middle school, 95%, and elementary, 97%. So that is different as it is already, because high school is a smaller one. But, uh, it's always harder for the high schools. Now that is an excuse, it's always harder for them.
My point is that if somebody fails to meet a, an ADA requirement, that doesn't mean that they've worked at any less. They, you know, because everyone's going to be working just as hard.
Correct, yes, sir.
And, and, uh, that's where I have a, a, a problem.
I, I, Coach, I think I know what you're saying and I think, you know, you're, you're, you're on to something because I think you're right. You know, I think if, if it does get met, it's going to be the same, uh, stipend for every, every employee, you know. But of course, teachers will have a different stipend, uh, as of, you know, the, the way they're, they're classified. But every school, whether it's an elementary or a high school or a middle school, uh, is going to end up with the same, uh, stipend. If, if the, the goal is met across the board district.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want any kind of division to, 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 to develop because of, of this competitive thing. We're also supposed to be working for the same goal.
Yes, sir.
And, and, um, as, as, as long as everybody's on the same playing field and, and it's fair for everyone, I don't have a problem. But that one's going to be better than another and all this, that, that might create problem.
You know, I, I'm thinking, um, we don't have to approve the, the contingent, uh, stipend right now. The only thing that, voting tonight to me, but besides the $1,000, the only thing that prevents is a future public hearing. So if we just want to approve the $1,000 stipend right now, well, that's it, we can do that. And then in December, we can, we can flesh out the rest of the, is it per campus or is it district-wide issue? Once we have the numbers in our hand, that might make that decision easier. And the only thing it's going to cost us is a public hearing.
That's right, if you don't approve it now and you, we're going to increase later, we would have to have a public hearing. You, you can approve the way Mr. Kennedy suggested or, uh, and Andres, if you can clarify for Coach Cuellar, what the, how the, how the contingent payout is going to look for June, is it? And then I guess what he's asking is, is it, if the district meets it, everybody gets it or is it specific to campuses?
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, can, can I go back to the presentation so I can show the number that I have? Can I present that one?
Yes.
Yes, Andres.
You had it, Andres, you passed it. He just passed it.
Andres, you're still on mute.
Hello, no wonder you don't hear me, sorry. Because you see my presentation, thank you. All right, let me see. Okay, I'm there already, let me go to my page here. Okay, you see it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this, this is what I was presenting. Uh, if at the end of the year, we have the at least 200 ADA and this is the amount we can pay. And it went up like that. Uh, by this I meant, if we get, instead of $15,200, we get $15,400, we get the first amount and then the next one. If the, what, I wanted to clarify, if the board asking if we do the contingent, uh, one-time incentive payment in June, do you want it to be the same for everybody or the way I have it included in here?
Same for everybody.
Okay, so then.
Everybody.
Okay, okay, so then what, what I would suggest is, like, here on the, the column that had the 400 for the teachers, that will be 400 for everybody. Okay? So that, that would be like $920,000 instead of $820,000, the amount would go higher. So the amount of the 200 ADA would have to be increased, uh, additional ADA to, to come up with the amount, like another 20 ADA more. So you, you follow what I said? We will make it 400 for everybody, instead of, so instead of $820,000, you would need about $920,000.
Okay.
I mean, we would need about 220 ADA or something like that.
So the number would change for the ADA.
Right, so then if we go to the next one, instead of 220, we get 280, 290, whatever the amount is needed. Everybody will get 600 and 800 and 1,000. So what, what I would do is I would, uh, now I'm going to get out of here to go back to what you can see. Yes.
Why don't you keep this on, on the second, on the second part, on, on this one contingent? You can keep it like that, is this first one that, the only one that I, that I want to go and?
No, that's what I was asking, okay, so then we can, we can leave it like this. No, that's what I was asking. Okay, so then we can, we can leave it like this. Yeah, the one will be a thousand for everybody. We understood that correctly.
Because you're going to be three hundred and fifty over on the ADA anyway. You you cut it, you cut it very low. It won't be over.
Well, and that's it. If we have more money, we will pay more. The I I started the budget with that. We don't know how the ADA is going to be. We hope it higher, but I don't, I cannot make predictions of that kind.
Keep the numbers as as they, you have them there on the screen.
Okay.
And move forward.
Okay.
And that's what the motion is.
So we have a motion by Mr. Lopez and a second by Mr. Kennedy, correct?
Correct.
What we do, but I'd like to, I think there's still, so this is the way I'm reading it. I think there's a disagreement from where Mo is toward toward Dr. Rodriguez is. My understanding of Mo's argument is uh, it should, the ADA contingency should be based on schools. And Dr. Rodriguez, it should be blanked across the district. At least that's what I'm, that's what I think the arguments are. I could be wrong.
I'm fine with district, across the district.
Well, and to be clear, Andres, can you be clear as to how that is, how that works? Is it campus-specific or is it, and that was Coach Quer's question too, or is it district-wide?
The contingent incentive payment will be district-wide, not subject to a school. We need all the schools to work on it. Some will work harder than others perhaps, but it will be divided at the same time. Even if we don't get at least the two hundred, and some schools did go on above and beyond what they needed to do, they wouldn't be entitled to anything because we did not get at least the two hundred or two hundred and twenty needed.
Are the rest of you all okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
I agree with Mando Quer and his words. I felt like playing football for him or something. But he had a good conversation as to making everybody equal and fair and everybody working together. So I agree with that.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm good.
Okay, so right now we have a motion with a thousand uh, incentive in December. So what do we have for the second part?
So so what we're going to do, and and here was the motion that was already made, it's a thousand per employee for every ninety employee that's been with us for at least ninety days in December. Every employee gets that, and that's an amendment to our general fund budget.
Correct.
We're adopting our debt service budget. Uh, and as far as the contingency, it's it's as presented by Andres. It's it's based a district-wide ADA-based um, amount as per what was presented by Mr. Mr. Sanchez. That's the motion you have on the floor right now.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Lopez and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Any other discussion?
Mr. Sanchez, real quick, so now with going to the one thousand dollar uh, one-time uh, payment in uh, December, you know, we talked earlier about this coming out of the surplus that we were going to have. So even even with this increase, you know, we should still have about two million dollars going into the the fund fund balance, correct?
Yes, we can do in two and a half million.
Okay, good.
All right, so I have a motion. Now let's take it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye when I call out your name. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Doctor Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Quer?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Good job.
Thank you, Andres. I know that Andres and his team have done a great job and 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 uh, he'll make it, he'll make this work for us.
All right, let's continue now on to um, item seventeen. Discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one total tax rate of a dollar point zero one eighty-nine on each a hundred dollars of excess assessed taxable property value with a maiden operations tax rate of point nine nine eight nine and an interest and sinking tax rate of point zero two pennies. Uh, Doctor Gonzalez?
I'll move to approve the rates. Sorry for interrupting.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Correct?
Yes.
To approve the uh, resolution adopting the twenty twenty total tax rate of one point zero one eighty-nine on each a hundred dollars of excess taxable property, uh, maintenance and operation tax rate of nine point nine nine eight nine and an interest and sinking sign of point zero two, correct? Let's take a vote. Uh, all in favor, please say aye when I mention your name. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Doctor Jaime?
Aye.
Doctor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Uh, I would just like to add that our tax rate did go down. So um, if at the end of the of this vote, we can let Andres add a few words on 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 just to explain to our public, I my my vote is aye.
Okay, uh, Coach Quer?
Aye.
Motion carries. So uh, Andres, you want to say a couple of comments for Doctor Gonzalez on uh, on this uh, proposal?
Yes, I'll make the comment.
Tax rate, Andres?
Yes, on the the tax rate, uh, our property values went up by two hundred million from last year to this year. So when the legislature approved uh, the legislature last year, they had a a bill that passed that said that school districts could not raise uh, taxes when the increase in property values exceeded two point five percent on the prior year. A decrease this year was eight point three percent. So because of that, the formulas changed the rate for almost one dollar and five pennies to almost one dollar only, point ninety-nine eighty-nine. So we went down five pennies on our flat rate. And uh, that went down, but because the values went up. Uh, taxpayer, uh, a taxpayer with a home valued at one hundred thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars in the average will pay eighty-four dollars additional taxes this year. For, and this is for the whole year. So there'll be eighty-four dollars more that they're going to have to pay in the bill. That the bill that they will get in uh, probably November. That's about seven dollars increase per month on the the amount owed. And this is because of the increase in property values. A tax rate went down, but even then, they still had to pay more taxes. A home value at a lesser amount will pay less taxes on the increase. And this is the the property taxes for Wesaco only, only. Not the city, the county, the South Texas College, or South Texas ID. Hope that helps.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Andres, for the information. It is uh, eight oh two, and we will be going going to close meeting to discuss the following. A, personal matters. Number one, employment of personnel. Number two, resignations. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Uh, three, A, evaluation of superintendent and consideration regarding superintendent contract. Uh, B, deliberation regarding acquisition of real property. Uh, C, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, a settlement offer, a matter of which is duty of the attorney to the Wesaco ISD under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Department of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five five one of the Texas government code, government code five five one point zero seven one. It is eight oh three, and we will go into executive session. So log off of this particular site and then go into executive session. All right, uh, let's continue. Uh, possible action if necessary in items discussed in closed meeting. Uh, number one, discussion of possible action on new employment. Doctor Gonzalez?
Board of Trustees, I'm recommending that you approve the recommendation of contracts for certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
There were a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and second by uh, Doctor Jaime to approve a new employment as discussed in executive session. Uh, all in favor, please say aye when I call you out your name. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Uh, Doctor Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Quer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, discussion of possible action on resignations. Do we need a motion on that, Ivan? Okay.
So I'm I'm recommending Board of Trustees that you approve the resignations, retirements of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez and second by Doctor Jaime uh, to approve resignations as approved in executive session. Uh, all in favor, please say aye when I call you out your name. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Doctor Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Coach Quer?
Aye.
And myself, motion passes. Item number three, uh, discussion and possible action on superintendent evaluation and possible action on contract. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I move to approve the evaluation of superintendent as discussed in the closed meeting. Secondly, I move to approve the superintendent's contract as discussed in closed session, including an extension through June twenty twenty-three and to authorize the payment of a stipend and incentive payment for the twenty twenty-one school year uh, as all other employees are receiving.
Second.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, any discussion? All right, so let's take a vote on this. Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Doctor Jaime?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Lopez?
Aye.
Mr. Quer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number four, we'll come back to Doctor Gonzalez in a minute. Uh, discussion of possible action on the acquisition of real property, no action.
Action.
Okay, so Doctor Gonzalez, uh, after reviewing your your evaluation, I'm going to start with first, I'm going to ask the the board members a couple of comments on uh, your evaluation. And I'll meet with you again later on to discuss the final evaluation. Doctor Jaime? Uh, well, first, a couple of comments.
Yes, Doctor Gonzalez, uh, you know, just want to say a few words, you know, and and and, you know, I think you're a great leader. Thank you for for all the hard work you and your team are are doing, especially during these tough times, you you know, these, you know, these are difficult times, but you you have been able to hold the district together and 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 show and demonstrate your leadership and uh, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rich.
Mr. Kennedy?
I think I can speak for the board and say that we're very happy where the district is at right now. We feel that for the most part, employees are happy, the district is moving in the right direction. Uh, we want to thank your leadership for that. And uh, I think it was a theme that we've seen you grow over the last four years. We're very happy that you're growing here in Wesaco. So thank you for everything that you're doing for us.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez? Oh, Coach Quer? Coach?
Alice? I can't thank you enough for always being there when when we need thing. The way you uh, you you've taken care of this school district. We're very, very happy with you and and it's very happy that uh, that you're a part of this family and and uh, and as always, whatever you need, we're here to help. Again, thanks for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Quer. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Doctor Gonzalez? We're very fortunate that you're here, uh, during the, especially these tough times uh, where you have to think quick on your feet and act faster. Uh, you have uh, exceeded everybody's expectations on on what we should have gotten as as far as a superintendent, and you're doing a great job and and we cannot thank you enough. For generations, we will be thanking you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Uh, is Mr. Gonzalez on?
Yes, I'm on now, Coach.
Okay, uh, any comments for Doctor Gonzalez?
Well, um, you know, four years ago, we were, we were put in a position of uh, having a look. And although it was very hard, very timely, um, we we couldn't have hit it out of the park more. And uh, you have been a blessing to our district, to our families, to our staff. Continue the great work that that you have done with your staff, and uh, I wish you nothing but the best. And you have maybe five or six more years to go, and I hope they're all here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
And and my, I want to take the time, of course, also to thank you for everything you've done, especially uh, during this COVID nineteen. And uh, of course, you've grown your central office personnel and your principals and uh, given opportunities to aspiring uh, teachers and principals that want to become principals through your uh, aspiring uh, Leadership Academy. But overall, yeah, you set some goals for the district. Uh, you've placed personnel in certain areas that has got helped you. But with your leadership, Wesaco ISD is continuing to improve. Uh, of course, we didn't have any uh, star scores last year, but the year, the prior year, also every single school got an A or a B. And of course, uh, almost every school got distinctions. And unfortunately, we couldn't test this past year, but I know we're going in the right direction. You have grown. Now you're a veteran and a superintendent. And uh, of course, uh, like my colleague said, that you're making very good decisions because now uh, you're a four-year, four-years as superintendent, correct?
It's almost four years, yes, Mr. Neto.
Okay, so again, continue working uh, with our principals and our students and our sta- our staff, but also with parents. Parents uh, see you out in the community. Uh, I know that you have joined several organizations, and that will put Wesaco on the map because, like I told Mr. Lopez and some of our, my fellow board members, they asked you to be part of those organizations. Uh, so that speaks a lot uh, for Wesaco. And I think Wesaco is improving, and we're happy there. We're giving you that uh, year of extension. And uh, you will continue to do well. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. May, may I say something?
Of course.
Okay, just um, to all the trustees and to the entire team, and that includes everybody. You know, we're in this together to win it for our children. The blessing is truly mine. I felt from day one that I was coming home. Most of you know that I grew up in South Texas in a small little town. And my heart has always been on making sure that children have the small, just all the opportunities they would in life. And not just now, but well into the future. And I always say, and I tell our people everywhere, this feels like home. We are Wesaco ISD strong, powerful teammates that I work with at all different levels, no matter which groups we meet with and at what level, there's an energy and there's a commitment by staff in our district that, you know, staff inspires me. Or trustees, you inspire me, and I'm the one that's truly blessed. So thank you for allowing me to be part of this wonderful family um, that I'll treasure forever until my last breath. You know, I will have Wesaco in my mind, the children of Wesaco, this team that's together right now in this space and this time. So thank you so much.
And again, uh, just on the evaluation, uh, quite an improvement from last year and the year before last. So uh, testimony from all the board members, uh, they were very positive about everything that you have done. And uh, yes, there's a little bit of a couple of improvements here and there, but overall, uh, outstanding evaluation. Uh, and uh, when I meet with you, we'll go over those uh, points. And again, uh, I appreciate all the comments from the board members. And of course, uh, thank you for leading our district again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mo, Lopez, anything else? All right, final.
A round of applause for superintendent and being for the superintendent is for the whole district.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, a German, Mr. Gonzalez?
So move.
It is nine fifteen and we close this meeting and we'll see you again next time. Stay safe.
Congratulations, stay safe.
Thank you so much.
Bye, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.